Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the regular council meeting to order. And I would like, first of all, to ask everyone to join council and me to take a moment, to pause and to reflect, and to remember those who have lost their lives and to those who have been injured by the evil acts of terrorism that occurred in Paris over the weekend. Surrey stands in solidarity with Paris and with the rest of the civilized world in condemning the cold-blooded slaughter of unarmed civilians who were merely going about their business in the French capital on Friday night. So we send our sympathies and our support to those victims, families, and the people of Paris who have been affected by these cowardly acts.
Madam Mayor, if I could.
Counselor Hain.
Thank you. In addition to the points that you've made, Madam Mayor, I'd like to point out that we've also lit the plaza just outside City Hall in the colors of the French flag to show our solidarity for the people of France. And we also have a book of condolences that residents can sign to add their message of sympathy and support for the people of Paris and to the family and friends who tragically lost loved ones. The book is located just outside the chambers in the atrium just behind us here.
Thank you for reminding me that of Counselor Hain. And so I would encourage all of those of you here tonight to please sign that book of condolence. Before we get into the formal part of the agenda, we do have a special presentation tonight from the Surrey Fire Service. And before I bring the chief up, I want to, on behalf of council, congratulate and commend Duncan Barker for his act of bravery. His actions on August 22 of this year, and you'll hear more about that in a few moments, speak volumes, not just about you, Duncan, but about the greater whole of the fine men and women of the Surrey Fire Service and what each and every one of our firefighters do to make our communities and our city a safer place to be. So on that day, you're going to hear that Duncan did exactly that, and at no thought of the risk that was posed to himself, his quick actions helped save a life. So I would like to call upon our fire chief, Lynn Garris, to tell you more about what the award Duncan is about to receive and why he has been recommended for it. Chief Garris?
Thank you. If I can ask my colleagues to join me here. Your worship, members of council. In 2014, the Surrey Fire Service adopted an awards accommodation program. The granting of an award is a tangible, lasting way to pay tribute to those that have performed bravery, made exceptional contribution to the Surrey Fire Service, and made a significant difference to members of our community. This program is designed to recognize staff and citizens who provide assistance to the Surrey Fire Service to that over and above the normal civic duty. We believe our staff are the foundation of an organization, and we pride ourselves in catching people doing things right. This provides an effective means for fostering high morale and esprit de corps. Every day, our members demonstrate a high level of commitment and dedication to serving the best interests of the organization and the community. The Surrey Fire Service Accommodation and Awards Program recognizes the tremendous efforts made by these people. The types of accommodations and awards are meritorious service, exceptional service, acts of valor. And tonight, we're here to present the deputy combination for valor to firefighter Duncan Barber. Chief Thomas, if you can.
I'm here. Thank you, chief, and welcome. Thank you, mayor and council and staff. So tonight, we're going to present to Duncan the deputy combination of valor. It's an award for an act of extraordinary bravery, performed off-duty or in the line of duty at imminent personal danger to life. So Duncan is getting this award for his actions on August 22 of this year, when he jumped into the deep end of a swimming pool to assist force RSCMP officers who were trying to rescue a person in a submerged electric wheelchair. Without any hesitation, Duncan assessed the situation and identified a solution. With a rope in hand, he doffed his fire gear, jumped into the pool, dove down to the deep end, and tied it onto the wheelchair. This allowed the fire crew to pull the wheelchair to the shallow end so that a rescue of the patient from the pool was feasible. Firefighter Barber's initiative and quick actions, without concern for his personal safety, made a significant difference in the outcome of the rescue. And at this point, I'd like to ask mayor and council if we can come to stage and join you for the presentation of the combination and medal.
I'm going to take you swimming with me. So now, the official part of the public hearing agenda will continue. And if I could ask, as we adopt the agenda this evening, to bring forward two corporate reports. One is R227, that is the Sustainability Sustainable Community Report, and the other is R228, Fire Dispatch Agreement with Maple Ridge. So on that.
Is that on table?
Yes, the fire agreement is on table. Could I have a resolution?
I'll move that those two reports be moved forward.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you very much. Adoption of minutes?
Move council and committee minutes, November 2.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be adopted for land use, November 2.
On second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move the public hearing minutes be moved, November 2.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And now we'll go into corporate report, R227.
Move recommendations on 227.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Your recommendations are R228, which is the Fire Dispatch Agreement.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. And thank you to the Fire Department for continuing their good work in providing dispatch services to so many communities now. And we're adding Maple Ridge to the mix, so thank you for that. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, may I have Madam Clerk, please, first bylaw?
The first bylaw is zoning amendment by law 18545. The address is 7706 155th Street. The applicants are Margaret Tasker, Charles and Michael Van Hahn. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the site into four single-family lots with the consolidation of the proposed lot to the south.
I have one person signed up to speak to this bylaw, David Shaw. Is David in the audience? B1. Okay, which number is that? That is, okay, number three.
B3, Madam Clerk.
Okay, I'll correct that, Madam Clerk. And so is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call. Could you go to the other mic, please?
Good evening, mayor and council. Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, care of 7680 143th Street. It's with regards to the section of this report relating to the biodiversity conservation strategy and open space. We've spoken before to the issues with regards to the biodiversity conservation strategy, but one concern that we have that indeed relates to several matters before council tonight is the fact that the biodiversity conservation strategy does not seem to be understood to be what it is, which is a minimum of what was identified as important in the ecosystem management study. So that every time anything is taken away from what the biodiversity conservation strategy has delineated or specified with regards to the size of a hub or a corridor, and we don't identify sites very much anymore, means that overall, we're having progressively less and less and less, because those places not identified in the BCS do not seem to be equally identified as being important, notwithstanding the fact that they are having been identified in the EMS, but not at this time any longer identified with corridors. So the issue here, and we've spoken to this one before, is that this is an area where the corridor is going to be between two lanes of road. And once again, we have the issue of it's going to wind up being a walk and not as wide as the initial corridor was specified. So they're going to have people with their dogs and everything else walking along there. Yes, agree that it's going to be better for children to cross this area, but it's hardly going to be ideal as a corridor unless, of course, it's at nighttime, but then that, of course, is also dependent on the amount of lighting. So we'll just simply bring that to your attention. What I did like for some of these reports, and I'll mention it later, is the fact that you're being provided with a map now so you can see where these places are located relative to the rest of the biodiversity conservation strategy network.
Thank you for comments, Deb. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
It's Official Community Plan Amendment by law 18546 and Zoning Amendment by law 18547. The address is 7627 and 7643 148th Street. The applicant is Superstar Homes Limited. The applicant is seeking to redesignate the site from suburban to urban and to rezone from one-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into three single-family lots, and in addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the setbacks on proposed lot two in order to retain trees.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number two on the agenda? First call, second call, third and final call. Bylaw number three, Madam Clerk.
It's zoning amendment by law 18544. The address is 18571 18591, Highway 10. The applicants are Harbin Gill and Bruno Zapponi. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicant's proposing to subdivide into 15 single-family lots.
Now, I have one person signed up for this one, David Shaw.
Thank you for taking our comments. I'm representing myself and five neighbors immediately in the immediate area to be affected by this development. I'm new to this, so please forgive my whole pause.
Could you just lift the mic, sir, just a little closer so that the audience can hear you as well as we can?
Is that better?
That's perfect, thank you.
All right. I submitted our comments in writing earlier. I don't know whether you'd like me to read them out for the benefit of the councilors or I can...
We have those comments as well as the petition, 12 signature petition relative to B3, yes.
Okay. I just want to emphasize that we, our concerns are primarily about the cul-de-sac and the restrictions that are placed on the planning staff in order to provide for the homes to of the appropriate proportions and size on the lot to provide adequate parking, expected with the homeowners and the residents in their suites. The addition of suites in the neighborhood is going to add considerable number of vehicles. And I pointed out in my comments and in the paper that I submitted earlier that the provisions for parking are just simply inadequate, and we really do fear that it's going to create a situation that degrades our community. So I hope you'll read my comments and then take those into consideration when you consider our recommendation to reject this amendment at this time until further study can be made on how to deal with the parking issues we anticipate will arise. Thank you very much for taking my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call. Yes, sir. Please come forward. Oh, we have someone at the mic already. Go ahead, sir, and then I'll let you fight over the mic.
Hi, my name is Nicholson. I live at 18658 56B Avenue, right at the end of 56B. I'd just like to comment as well on the parking situation. If there's going to be, there's not a lot of parking on the street to begin with. I have a large driveway which allows me to park my vehicles in my driveway, six vehicles, but sometimes it's not feasible to park all six in there. So we do park on the street, and there's, excuse me, between my house and the neighbor's house, there's enough room for two cars. Now, if I park there and another, and they park there, then there's no parking. And then if there's going to be more in the cul-de-sac that are going to be parking out of the cul-de-sac, then we're going to have issues. We only moved there 11 months ago. We had issues in Burnaby in our last house with the parking, because there's no street parking. And I don't, I just don't want to have the same situation at our new house. So my basic concern is the parking and extra traffic.
Okay, have question for you, sir. Counselor Villeneuve.
I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood. You, you have six vehicles at your home?
Yes, well, right now I have five. I had six, my daughter got married this year.
And how many parking spots are provided at your home? For your vehicles?
I can park three across at the front of the house and three behind them as well.
So you have adequate parking on your lot for six vehicles, so you're not parking on the street at all?
Well, we usually try not to, but my mother-in-law is a little bit elderly, and she doesn't like to squeeze into the driveway, so she likes to park on the street, because it's hard for her to jettison her car.
So you have a secondary suite in your home?
Pardon?
You have a secondary suite in your home?
Yes, I do, yeah. And my mother-in-law lives with us there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that with six vehicles, you weren't one of the people taking up the street parking that you're concerned about.
Well, we try to fit everything into the driveway so we don't have to park on the street. But I say, with the issue is my mother, my mother-in-law is 74, and she's already hit my fence a couple times pulling in, so she likes to park on the street so she doesn't hit nothing.
Okay. So you object to this proposal because it doesn't provide enough parking at their homes?
Well, not really my right to object. It's his property, he can do what he wishes, but my concern is the parking, because if you say, if all these people in the cul-de-sac, and the way the cul-de-sacks are situated, then there's usually no parking in front of a cul-de-sack.
Okay, thank you.
So then they're going to be out stretching everybody else's property.
Thank you.
That's my only concern.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I believe there was another gentleman. Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Mike Bowler. I'm the president of the Cloverdale Community Association. My address is 1728664 A Avenue, Surrey. Madam Mayor and council, I would like to bring to your attention a few issues we have with the city's position as stated in this planning report. Before I get started, we would like to mention that this planning report was printed on November 2, and the developer contacted us a week later. Even though it was after the fact, we appreciate the dialogue and the consideration the developer has agreed to since this report has been printed. Our association had submitted several requests as stated in the planning report. They had to do with secondary suite parking requirements, on-street parking, and garage sizes. To begin with, starting with the secondary suite requirements, as stated in by law 12000, a parking space must be provided if a secondary suite is going to be installed. We all know that once this developer develops the land and sells it to builders, chances are the suites will be built either now or in the future. While the planning department is correct to say that the total of four off-street parking vehicles is required for a single family dwelling with a secondary suite, this does not work in the real world. As we have said many times at public hearings, which we have attended, you cannot expect to bother a tenant every time you have to take your vehicle out of the garage or if you, if you have guests over and have them move their vehicle just so your guest can park. According to the bylaw, they can't, the tenants can't even park on the street. Our association presented these issues earlier this year to the TIC, and we're still waiting for a response to see if they have done the right thing, which is to amend this bylaw requirement to either include a parking spot next to the driveway, which is more practical, or allow the tenants to park on the road and have the residents, the homeowner, park on their own driveway and in their garage. I'm not sure why it's taking almost a year to fix this issue, which will haunt us for decades. The planning department has suggested to the developer to provide a parking spot next to the garage. However, in our view, the developers and the developers, this is not a logical approach as you can expect someone to move cars around when the tenant needs to leave or park their car in the dedicated spot. Madam Mayor, can I please have the following illustration displayed here?
Somebody move your seat.
I'll move my seat.
Okay. Oh, it's just display, sorry.
So in my example here, what the planning staff were recommending is something to that effect. Now, if we have that tenant parking at that top left corner where the garage is located right now, there's no way that person's going to be able to pull the car out. I know that in the past, we've sort of made exceptions to the fact, but if we look at this closely, it does not work in the real world. So we couldn't support this initiative, and we strongly opposed it, and we asked the developer to create a parking pad or parking space next to the driveway. But planning staff had said that you can't have three cars in a row because that's what the bylaw states. So we're kind of fighting against two things here. One is, we want the parking, but then there's a bylaw preventing us from giving the parking spot.
Just for clarification, Mr. Bowler, what are you suggesting? That this one to the left of the garage is feasible in your mind or is not feasible in your mind?
Is not feasible.
And the rationale for that would be?
Because you cannot pull that car out if there's two vehicles in the driveway.
And how do you, how do you marry that up with the many tandem parking situations that we have?
So right now, if, if that driveway were to go straight onto the road, just the way it is in a tandem format, you'd be able to, the tenant can pull his car out of the driveway with no issues.
I get that for ease of moving, but in the absence of that happening, he could also simply move the vehicles much that, much the same as we do throughout the city relative to tandem garages?
I guess you could. So if at 12 o'clock at night, Madam Mayor, with all due respect, you cannot expect to knock on the homeowner's door and say, hey, can you move your car because I need to go somewhere? I mean, do you see what I'm saying? That, that's, those two cars would be the homeowner's.
Or I hear the argument, but I just wanted to clarify the argument. That's what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The next issue is with the houses located in the cul-de-sac and on-street parking. While the planning department stated in the report that driveways will be a minimum of 6.7 meters or 22 feet deep, consideration should have been given to push the houses back further since there is no parking allowed in the cul-de-sac. Anyone wanting to park on the street, which would have, which would include guests and tenants, would have to use existing on-street parking down the street, which is not fair to those who have been living there for many years. The developer has agreed to provide longer driveways where possible. Madam Mayor and council, can you please advise why planning department didn't ask the developer to push these houses back further so they can at least create four parking spots on the driveway rather than just standard two, or minimum two?
Is that, is that your comments?
No, I'm asking, I'm asking a question, Madam Mayor. I'm asking if planning, planning could provide the comments as to why they did not consider pushing.
So through, could I ask the planner then to respond to that relative to the analysis of the long driveway?
Yes, Madam Mayor, to the delegation, the proposed lots meet the RF zone in terms of providing for off-street parking stalls, so staff did not ask for additional driveway length.
So they meet, they meet a zone that is currently?
That's right. So, Madam Mayor, so that's, that's the whole point. The minimum two is being met, but we know there's no parking allowed in the cul-de-sac. So what we're saying is if the house was pushed back, you create additional two parking spots, which alleviates some of the stress that's going to be created on the on-street parking that's further down the street. So I think there's some, should be some exceptions made in the case when we're trying to use our discretion instead of just following the minimum standards and then saying, this is what it's going to be like.
Thank you.
Our last issue has to do with garage sizes. The planning department has stated that the minimum double side, double-wide side-by-side parking garage size in the zoning by law is 5.7 meters, which is 18.8 feet, by 6.1 meters, which is 20 feet deep. The total space these dimensions provide is about 376 square meters or square feet. Madam Mayor, can you please advise what the garage size requirement is for an RF zone?
Mr. Planner?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the minimum garage size is 5.7 meters in width by 6.1 meters in depth.
So, Madam Mayor, we actually think that the, the part, the part, the garage sizes in the, stated in part five of the zoning by law, need to consider larger vehicles. While the depth is there, the width isn't there. And I know we've had these arguments going back and forth with planning in the past where they said the garage shouldn't cover the whole house in the front, but we have issues. We come across major issues when we don't have enough garage space. And I actually wanted to show what we've been seeing in our neighborhood anyways, and I'm sure the rest of, rest of Surrey's seen the same stuff. So that is a garage.
Oh, yes, we've seen that before.
Yeah, that's an RF 12 house, RF 12 lot, and that's what the garage is being used for. And the bottom picture, I took a little bit, a bigger area of it to show you that the whole backyard's been paved because he no longer parks in his garage. And he has tenants as well. So... So, I seriously think that we need to reconsider the garage sizes to fit the needs of today and not 10, 20 years ago. Let's see here.
Councilor Hain has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a question for the delegation and a question for staff. What size of garage would you suggest would accommodate that and cars?
So, what we've done with the developer, and which he's agreed to do, is make the garage size 6.4 meters deep, I think, and 6.1 meters wide, okay? And that's to accommodate vehicles such as F-150s, pickup trucks, and, you know, 7, 8 series BMWs. So he's agreed to do that, but again, if we get the 5.7, you can get longer vehicles, but they're not wide enough, the garage is not wide enough, so people don't park in there.
I see. Thank you. And through you, Madam Mayor, to planning, these are full-sized RF lots, correct? And that was zoned in the mid-'90s or something in that community?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the proposed lots meet the RF zone dimensional and area requirements.
And the community is zoned RF? The NCP? Yes?
Yeah, surrounding community, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
One thing I wanted to show, Madam Mayor, is I actually skipped this part here with regards to the parking pads. This is what the current neighborhood looks like right now. I spent a day taking photos, just to show everyone what it looks like. So in this diagram here, you see the top, the person has a trailer in the top there, he's parked on the gravel side, he has some space, some setback on the right side there. Bottom one, again, anybody can park a vehicle there. I don't see bylaws coming there saying you can't do that. If you can, please turn to the next page. And in this case here, we have somebody with an RV, a motorhome, you know, he's using his space, he's paved in the front. Again, nobody's filed any complaints saying that this is causing, you know, a visual appearance issue. And the top one, you can see the person has a big trailer there, and a boat, but he's using the extra space on the side of the house. There's a reason why the parking pad is very ideal in those cases. It helps unless you're going to start seeing these things on the road then, very soon, if they were enforced. Can we turn to the next page, please? So again, this is the top photo there. In the middle there, between that car and that Jeep there, the guy's using that space as a trailer, so he doesn't have to push his vehicle on the road there to park his trailer on the driveway. In the bottom one, this pickup truck parked aside, nice and easy access, he can pull it out. This is the example we were using here. You know, if that was the tenant's parking spot, that'd be great, easy to use. And was there any more there? Was there one more here? And this is another prime example, it's gravelled, so I know that the city has concerns with water and whatnot causing stress in the storm drains and all that, but, you know, somebody could gravel it. In the bottom one, there's another motorhome part there. Nobody's filed any complaints. I've actually went around there, and everybody's happy. The neighborhood is very big, and it's all RF zoned, like the planning staff has said. So it's great, and we're glad that the developer's not deciding to put RF 12, so that would be a problem. In conclusion, Madam Mayor and Council, we ask that you direct staff to ensure our agreements between the developer and the association are included in all the documentation, including the building scheme, and support this development moving forward. Furthermore, we ask that you quickly amend the bylaws pertaining to on-street and off-street parking, so we can put these issues to arrest. Not only will this benefit Cloverdale, but it will also benefit the rest of Surrey. The longer we wait, the more damage is being caused, and we cannot blame the developers like this one who are following the bylaws. When we ask them to change something, they say, "Look, we're following the bylaws, why do you want us to change it? That's what the bylaws state." So they're going black and white, and we're asking them to make some exceptions for us. So instead of fighting back and forth, if we just looked at the bylaws and amended it, I think we'd resolve the majority of the issues we're having today. It's not like we can take and erase it and erase all the problems later. These houses will be around for decades, and it will be too late then. Someone has to take the initiative and ask staff to review all the bylaws to meet today's needs, rather than meeting the needs of 10 years ago or more when they were first created. I understand that staff reviews certain bylaws, but the reviews aren't moving fast enough. That's all, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number three? Deb?
Thank you. Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners, care of 7680 143 Street. Using this as an example, we had made representation and thought that when the replacement trees were numbered, that they would be divided up into deciduous and coniferous, so that citizens as well as council could determine if there was a reasonable amount of replacement for that which was being killed off, so that, notwithstanding the fact that there are twice as many per conifer, at least understanding that there would be a balance of conifer and deciduous replanted onto a site. It appears, I haven't done research and all the rest of it, but it appears that mostly what is getting planted is the deciduous trees. And if we had some idea, and on one report just before he left, Nicholas Lai had, indeed, had incorporated, so that we could see what the replacement trees were, in terms of the numbers of deciduous and the numbers of conifers. So, just bringing that to your attention with regards to this, because there's going to be a whole lot of lost tree canopy for the city with regards to this site. The total destruction of trees will be 96, of which 64 alder and cottonwood, 80 deciduous, and what's left over will be two conifers kept. And we don't know what it is that's going to be replacing them.
So let's just see if there's a response to that in terms of defining the landscape of the replacement trees. Particularly, I'm not interested in the alder and the other, but the significant 36 or 40 of the larger trees, are they, do we define them that there's a balance between coniferous and deciduous?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On the screen here is the tree replacement plan, and the species are shown in the table in the top right corner, and there's a combination of deciduous and coniferous trees shown. The delegation is correct, that information was not in the body of the report, but it was an appendix to the report.
Okay, thank you. There you are, Deb.
It's supposed to be part and parcel of that form.
Yes. Thank you. Are there any other speakers for bylaw number three? Anyone after this gentleman? Then you, sir, are the last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Mike Comter. I'm the agent on this project. So if I could ask, planning to post the subdivision plan? So just as an indication, this property is the remaining, one of the last properties, or two properties in this block, and the cul-de-sac has been established as part of the original plan, so there's not much opportunity to get around an alternate road pattern for this area. So the biggest issues that I heard tonight was related to the parking. So the indication, as mentioned, the client, the owner, has met with Mike Bola from the Cloverdale Association. Maybe if I can ask Mr. Planner to post this, and apologize for the size of the drawing there. So, one of the indications was in terms of providing the additional parking space. So the plan, the client is willing to provide parking, the additional parking space, so whether it's a side-by-side third car along the front, or whether it's beside the garage, is something that will be accommodated with this project, and will be written into the building guidelines, that will be registered on title with this project. So this project will provide a minimum of off-street, five off-street parking stalls, two in the garage, three outside the garage, whether they're two in front of the garage, third one beside or beside the garage. With regards to the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac affords the additional opportunity to provide two additional stalls behind the two cars in front of the garage. On the cul-de-sac, there will not be any sidewalk fronting the property, and as such, it provides the additional space. So if we add the three meters plus the seven-and-a-half setback, it provides 10 and 1/2 driveway length, which provides enough length to allow two cars to park behind each other. So in fact, on the cul-de-sac lots, if you take the car that's shaded and the one beside it, you can add another two cars behind those two cars on the cul-de-sac lots. So it would afford up to seven cars on the cul-de-sac lots. With regards to the larger garage, the client has also agreed to the larger garage size that was recommended by Mike Bola from the Cloverdale Association as well. So he has agreed to the larger garage for this project, and that again will be written into the building guidelines, that will be registered on title for the project. So I think that's really all the questions and comments that I heard tonight. If there's any questions from Council?
I see, oh, Councilor Villanueva.
So I just want to clearly understand you. So basically, your client has agreed to make the changes that Mr. Bola has requested?
Yes, yes. As Mr. Bola stated, my client has been in conversation with him. This was moved forward, so it's not included in the report, because the conversations took place after.
Afterwards.
After the fact, so he has agreed to the requests that Mr. Bola has made in terms of the additional pad parking space, the larger garage on the houses here.
I think I like your client.
Sorry?
I think I like your client.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, may I have bylaw number four on the agenda?
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18550. The civic addresses are 18490, 18522, 18542, and 18570 70th Avenue. The applicant is Anthem West Clayton Developments Limited. The applicant seeking to rezone the site from 1-acre residential to multiple residential 30. The applicant's proposing to develop approximately 143 townhouse units. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the setbacks in order to allow for better public frontage-oriented units along all property lines.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. We've had correspondents on table in support and two in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call? The next bylaw, please, Madam Clerk.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18549. The address is 2820 160th Street, and the applicant is 1036848 E.C., Limited. The applicant seeking to rezone the property from 1-acre residential to single-family residential 12. Applicant is proposing to subdivide into three single-family residential lots.
I have one person signed up to speak to this bylaw, Amir Safavi.
Amir Safavi, I'm the neighbor, and if you could put the picture, the map.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I have three concerns. So I am on the REM 2, and as you see, there is a lane coming from that side, and 28th Avenue is a large avenue that has a traffic light on the cross-section by 160th. My first concern is about how the cars from Lot 3 to 1 are going to come out of, to the streets, because I myself, I'm on REM 2, and I have a large garage and driveway, and when I want to come out, still I find a bit of a difficulty with the traffic. So my first concern question is that Lot 3, how is Lot 2, Lot 1, how are the cars are going to come out?
So you're on REM 2 here?
I'm on REM 2.
At the bottom, okay?
Correct.
And how are the, what is the transportation pattern for lots 1, 2, and 3?
That's my question.
Okay. Mr. Engineer?
Madam Mayor. For lots 1 and 2, their access will be off of 28th Avenue. Lot 3 will have access off of the lane that's shown to the north.
Okay. My question is that there is a big traffic light on the cross-section of 160th and 28th, and cars going on that direction. Is there any concern? There has been several accidents on that corner already, and we put the request for traffic light, they put the traffic light. It's much better, but really it's going to jam that whole area. So I just want to make sure that the traffic guys look at this closely, because what I saw, the original plan was for that lane to continue, and all those lots 1, 2, 3 to be the other way and accessing the back lane. If you look at the larger picture of the area, we see that it's like that. So that's my first concern.
Okay, well, let's just ask our engineer in terms of its proximity to the corner. Do we have any issues around Lot 1 emptying onto 28th Avenue in proximity to that light?
Madam Mayor, Lot 1 is bounded by 160th Street, which is an arterial, and 28th Avenue, which is a collector, so we are requiring that access be taken off of 28th Avenue, and that driveway will be as far away from the intersection as possible. With the future building permit application, we'll be reviewing any possibilities for turnaround to be incorporated on-site, so that we're definitely not looking at any cars backing out onto 28th.
Okay, so they'll be able to go directly onto 28th as opposed to backing out onto the roadway? Thank you.
My second concern is about the trees, especially, my concern are about the trees that are in between, in Lot 3, between the lane and my property. They're very close to the line, and I want to know what is the plan for those trees are. I went to the inside the property, and I saw everything was marked red, all the trees, so that's my concern as what's going to happen with the trees.
All right, let's just see if we can get that information for you from our planner. Mr. Planner, can you speak to that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I believe the delegation is referring to the two trees shown as OS 9 and OS 8, and those trees are proposed to be retained.
So the trees that are straddling your lot with the Lot 3 are to be retained?
There are tall trees, especially the one in the front that you have circled. What's going to happen to that tree on the corner of Lot 3, this corner and my property?
They'll be retained.
Oh, it will be retained?
Correct.
Madam Mayor, just a clarification, the drawing here is showing proposed replanting, so the tree in the, where I'm pointing to, is a proposed replacement tree.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's at the back. I thought that was at the back of the lot, because they're entering from the laneway. So is this, are you looking at the ones to the, at the bottom of the lot, or the ones facing the laneway?
Okay. Along the, between Lot 3 and my property, there are about six tall trees. So, along that, so I understand the two at the butt, at the top, they're going to retain those, but then there will be about three, four cedar trees, tall trees. So my question is about those ones. And also one, the largest one, is the one that is circled, that I heard that they're going to replace it. So those trees, they're all healthy, and they're all along the border, so my question is that why are we cutting those ones?
Here we are, it looks like they're in the building envelope?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. They're right going through the center of Lot 3.
Correct. Those trees, they'll all be cut? They're all tall trees, healthy trees?
That's correct.
Yes, that is within the building envelope of Lot 3. It does not look like they're...
Okay. Are there plans to build, sorry, plant new trees along the, maybe replacement trees to move further to the side between the two properties?
Mr. Planner?
The plan on the screen is showing the replacement trees. There is the one in the corner being pointed to. There is the one in the corner being pointed to. And then to the north, there are the two existing trees and some additional trees at the back.
Okay. Could we ask for, now that we're cutting those tall trees, could we ask to plant new trees along the, from the developer, to ask trees along the sides between the two properties? Because my wife, she didn't come, but she's so picky about this, and I said, don't come, I go and raise my concern.
So in terms of buffering, is there any buffering between this Lot 3 and the RAM lot beside it?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, there is no plan.
Not currently planned for?
There's no plans for buffer, other than perhaps fencing, but the side yard of the home is located 1.2 meters from the property line.
Okay.
The applicant may be able to clarify as well in terms of plans.
Thank you. We'll try and get that clarification for you, sir.
Okay. And last concern is about the street light. My question is that on 28th, is there going to be, on 28th Avenue, is there going to be a traffic, is there going to be a street light added there? Maybe around Lot 2 or Lot? So there is going to be a street light there, added?
Just bear with us. I see the engineer is just looking that up. Yes, Mr. Engineer?
Madam Mayor, I can't respond to that question at this point, but that's something that we can certainly review with the developer's engineer.
Okay. Are you suggesting that there needs to be a street light on that, on that corner?
What happened is that my property, in front of mine, does not have a street light on my side, and my neighbor and further up, there is nothing. So the development happened and then stopped, and then there is no light. So it's good if, when they are developing, to put a street light there, that in fact is covering, giving some light to their neighborhood.
Okay.
So that's my suggestion and.
We will take note of that.
Okay. I think that's all. Thank you very much.
I thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number five? First call, second call, third and final call? Is the developer's agent or the developer here? So some of those questions can't answer. Okay. Thank you. B7, do I have? Okay, Madam Clerk, numbers. Ah, there we are.
Good evening. Mike Hella, I'm representing the developer.
Thank you.
Coastland Engineering Offices in Surrey. We are placing a street light roughly between Lots 2 and 3.
There is a street light going in there?
We will be putting one in, yes.
Thank you.
And as far as buffering, all we can offer is a cedar hedge because of the side yard setback issues.
Okay. I think those are the two main questions relative to, to your client. So I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, bylaw number six. It's a land use contract.
Land use contract number 148, termination bylaw number 18524. The civic addresses are 12255 and 12259 King George Boulevard. Purpose is to terminate land use contract number 148 to permit the existing underlying light impact industrial zone to come into effect.
Is there anyone else, or is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? I have no one signed up. First call, second call, third and final call? Okay, next bylaw, Madam Clerk, another land use contract.
Land use contract number 578, termination bylaw 18531. The civic addresses are 19516, 19534, and 19564, 16th Avenue. The purpose is to terminate the land use contract 578 to permit the existing underlying general agricultural zone to come into effect.
I have two persons signed up against this bylaw, and I have not wishing to speak, and I have one person signed up also against this bylaw wishing to speak.
If I could ask staff to put this on the overhead. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this evening. My name is Mike Prosko, and I reside at 2696172 Street in Surrey, B.C. My comments tonight regarding file 79150341, neither support nor oppose termination of this land use contract 578. And as you well know, the province of B.C., in its decision of May 29, 2014, so directed that all land use contracts be terminated by June 30, 2024. What is less clear, and speaks to my reason for appearing tonight, but what is less clear by the decision is its purpose for doing so and the subsequent manner in which the city of Surrey is proceeding. It should be noted that these three parcels of land are located adjacent to an existing file application 7915-0227, otherwise known as a truck parking facility. And that would be the area colored in red or pink, if you like, the yellow being the three properties being discharged tonight from their land use contracts. Madam Mayor, as realizing you've been out of the country and traveling, you may, may be unaware, however, your colleagues are fully aware of numerous letters and delegations from concerned Surrey taxpayers, all opposed to the application. And by way of background, this application comes from recommendations arising.
Mr. Prosko?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you to keep your comments to this particular application, which is in eliminating a land use contract, which is a more archaic piece of legislation around land as opposed to zoning, and moving this into a zone which is compatible with what the uses were under land use contracts, and that is general agriculture. This is not about a project that has not yet been before this council, and I am aware of it. And I am aware of, of the opposition that has been expressed by way of letter. I've seen lots of them. But that is not the purpose of tonight's hearing on a land use contract for general agriculture. So could I ask you to confine your comments to why you would support or not support a land use contract removal for general and moving it into general agriculture zone?
Thank you for your comments, Madam Mayor. And if I could ask your indulgence, it is a difficult thread to follow, and it does correspond, my presentation that is, to the adjacent development and the city's vision of this general area. And my impression and opinion of how these three particular land use contracts at this point in time being discharged may well have an impact going forward. And I would ask your indulgence, because I'm confident you will hear me conclude my presentation in that context.
I will ask for some clarification from my planner on what the existing uses under this land use contract are. My assumption is it too is agriculture.
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
So we're not, I'll give you some latitude, Mr. Prosko.
Thank you.
But quite frankly, this is moving from an archaic vehicle in the land titles office to a more approving vehicle by way of zoning of a certain piece of land. It has nothing to do with another application that at some point in time may or may not appear before us, but is certainly not part of the hearing tonight.
And in fairness, I accept your comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I am not here to dispute the underlying zoning or the current zoning. In fact, not at all. They are, as you have said, and I have no dispute with them. So again, if I may ask your indulgence, I will try to keep my discussion to the context that I intended with regard to the city of Surrey moving ahead to discharge these three particular contracts. And I would ask your indulgence at this public hearing as a member of the public to do so.
Unless you want to move it into another hearing around a truck park that doesn't currently exist, and you should then therefore be a delegation. But relative to this, this public hearing is about this particular piece of land and this land use contract, and that's what I intend on you keeping your, your comments to.
I will endeavor to do so, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
But I, to fully explain my concerns, I need to present it in the context of the immediate area.
Fine, that's great.
If I could ask you.
As long as we're still talking about removing a land use contract, to me, it's a housekeeping idea, but you go ahead and tell us how you think it's different.
I respect what you say, Madam Mayor, and I'm not disputing those points that you've raised.
Thank you.
In fact, I do agree, the land use contracts are a longstanding, and in your words, perhaps archaic, aspect of land use designation and usage that has been long overdue for a change. Unfortunately, speaking for or against, there was really no option to say, as I said at the outset. I'm neither for or against, but I do want to raise some comments with respect to the timing and application of this change to the land use contracts.
Okay. We've been going through all of them, so.
If I could ask your indulgence, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Public hearings are difficult to speak at on a good day, and granted, I do it perhaps more than the average citizen, but it is difficult. And if you could allow me to chase it to the end, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
No, I'm giving you the latitude to have that. Just go ahead, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you, and as I say, please, if any of you have questions, please hold, hold them to the conclusion. I would be more than pleased to answer them if I'm able. Okay, where did we go? So I brought to your attention that the three parcels of land that are subject to the discharge this evening are shown in yellow, and coincidentally, they are located next to an adjacent area which has had some discussions surrounding its future use as a truck parking facility. And I don't believe that's in dispute at any level of the process. The argument, as I was saying, let's go back here. Interruptions make it difficult to maintain a flow. As, by way of background, the application that, I realize you would rather I not address tonight, but I'll keep it brief, for this truck parking lot came forward from our Transportation Infrastructure Committee again, and in fact, was a good recommendation, and in much as we have a problem with truck parking. And I have total agreement with your counsel that a solution is desperately needed. What I did want to draw into content tonight was that when that particular application was advanced, there was not so much as a single question or inquiry made as to the recommendation. And it's perhaps unpleasant to say, and I do emphasize unpleasant to say, it's not my intent, but it did appear that the council had made up its mind in advance that any due diligence normally associated with individual motions brought forward, in the case of the pink area, that it was not.
Could you just tell me how this is in correlation to the piece of property on the yellow, which is the subject of the public hearing this evening? Because otherwise, I'm going to have to ask you to hold your comments, ask to be a delegation on another matter, and call it today. But this is not, as I can see it, so far, anything to do with the discharge of a land use contract.
Well, in fairness, Madam Mayor, I did ask your indulgence, as this is a public hearing, and I'm trying to keep it brief, despite the contrary happening. So let me go to my point. Respecting the city of Surrey having chosen to terminate these particular land use contracts first and ahead of some 297 existing contracts located throughout Surrey, does leave a somewhat bad taste, in my opinion. And I say this because these proceedings and the selection of these three parcels are made at the discretion of the city of Surrey for whatever reasons they establish.
Let's just see if we can see how they're established. Mr. City Planner, could you tell me why they're in this particular order, or what order we're dealing with them? I understand we have hundreds.
Madam Mayor, you recall that on June 15, 2015, we did a corporate report outlining how we would proceed with the extermination or the changes to the land use contract. And in that report, we outlined the timelines on specific, starting with the simple one, going, finishing with the residential one. So we're following that timeline, and that's the one of the land use contract termination that's before you tonight. We've had many since that report was done, all as per the sequence that was outlined in that June 2015 report.
Okay. Thank you.
May I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. As I had requested at the outset, Madam Mayor, if I could field your questions at the end of my presentation, it's a reciprocal respect that I know you and your council request of the public not to be interrupted, and I would hope I could ask the same. The question that Monsieur LeLond answered for you is in fact what I had said. These proceedings are made at the discretion of the city of Surrey, and they are selected to go forward in whatever manner and order they see fit. I do want to draw to your attention, though, given what we, the community, know about the area and the coincidental application for a truck parking facility, it's not reassuring in our minds and in our, in our view. And if I could ask council to put, or not council, if I could ask staff to put up on the overhead.
Is it relative to the property in question?
Well, perhaps not in your opinion, but it is in the context of what we're doing tonight.
I'm going to stop you. Sir, I am going to stop you. And I'm going to ask the city solicitor, what is it that, if this is relative to this particular land use issue, contract being discharged, and the overriding zone of general agriculture, how far do I go in dealing with an application that is not before this council? If I may have some clarification from the city solicitor?
Yes, Madam Mayor. No, I agree with you that irrelevant considerations need not be heard, that are not related to the simple removal and termination of a land use contract to allow the GA zone to apply. That's what's at issue here, the appropriateness of the underlying zoning, not a hypothetical rezoning application.
So, Mr. Prosko, I'm sorry, I can no longer entertain your comments. I will accept anything you have to say relative to the removal of this land use contract to effect the underlying zone of agriculture. And after that, you may find another avenue to speak to us on another matter.
I see. Well, it's difficult that you could judge my presentation before I finished it, but I will respect your wishes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much for your.
If I could have my overhead back?
Comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this land use contract?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilors.
No problem.
My name is David Anderson. I live at 19353 16th Avenue, which is the property just northwest of the land use contract lands in question.
Yes.
I modify my comments, given the most recent interchange. I think I'm also the director of the Arasha Center, the Brooksdale Environmental Center. So I'm, I'm standing here in part because I, I've been fielding a lot of concerned calls. We have several hundred volunteers and several thousand supporters in the Lower Mainland. And I, I understand after conversations with city staff recently, very informative and clear ones, that it purely is coincidental, the timing of the decommissioning of the land use contracts and the, and the application for rezoning immediately west.
That is correct. This is simply affecting.
Yes.
A zone that currently exists but is getting rid of an archaic vehicle of land use contracts.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And it's helpful even to have it clarified again tonight, because I can, I can continue to communicate that to our constituency and the public. I think the challenge before myself and the challenge potentially before city staff or communications department is that the optics look poor, given the timing.
Well, since we have no.
I know, I know.
I hear that.
I'm just speaking.
But this council has received no other application in front of it.
Okay.
So this is simply a housekeeping required by the province to effect, to get rid of land use contracts.
Thank you.
And quite frankly, this one going back to general agriculture is pure process.
Yes. And I also understand that general agriculture is actually a, there's stipulations within that that are better in many cases.
Yes.
Which I understand. Which I understand. Can I then simply ask, with respect that, given the concern is for potential rezoning, could I ask for a sense of assurance from council that the September 8th, on September 8th, 2014...
No, you can't, I'm sorry. You're going to ask something about another application that has nothing to do with this land use?
No, I'm not, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, when you started talking September, I thought it was something relative to...
No, no, sorry, no, I'm simply asking, there was a resolution made in 2014 that no rezoning applications would be considered in the South Campbell Heights Special Study Area until the local area plan was complete, and it's the, I'm simply asking that that could stand, for the properties in question.
Yeah, and that doesn't affect this application, you're absolutely right, this is just simply an underlying zone that's coming into effect, it is not a rezoning.
Yes, I understand.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, thanks for hearing my concerns.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this land use contract?
Good evening, Mayor and council, Brian Coote, at 76 210th Street in Langley. Thank you for letting me address you this evening on this matter. I would like to speak out against the termination of these land use contracts at 19516, 19534, and 19564 16th Avenue. I'm speaking out against this because, I guess, given that the council has previously shown its willingness to exempt neighboring properties from the local area planning thus underway by staff in order to entertain other development proposals, I am deeply concerned that despite the staff's assurances that this is merely a coincidence, and that the A1 zoning of these lands will remain in place, that the council could very well make a motion at any time to consider a zoning to industrial, and some sort of an industrial application in the future, and it could all happen very quickly without the due consideration that agricultural lands like these three properties do in fact deserve. I think there's a few areas of concern that the local residents have for these agricultural properties here on 16th Avenue, and the first one is that there is a sustainability charter and a biodiversity conservation strategy that the city of Surrey does have, and the process of exempting properties in this area previously from the local area planning process, it flies in the face of the city's own documentation to allow these properties to be pulled in advance of the local area planning. And so I guess my question to you is, Madam Mayor, could you assure us that there will remain an agricultural zoning on these properties in the future while the local area plan is...
Thank you, sir, for your comments, but just let me ask the city planner, under a land use contract, there is no difference in that which would be allowed by way of process than there is under a zone called general agriculture, am I correct in that assumption?
That's correct, Madam Mayor, and just to reiterate, when we went forward with our June 2015 report, in Appendix 1, we had an outline of how we would go about those land use contract termination. The first phase was 16 industrial land use contract termination, the 16th one was just before this one, that's on the table right now, and following that one, there's four agricultural land use contracts throughout the city, they're the next wave that we're, and we're dealing with the first of the four tonight, so, and once, if this gets approved by council tonight, there's a year before the termination comes into effect, so it will remain a land use contract for the next 12 months, should council approve the rezoning.
And irrespective of whether it's a land use contract or a zone, the same privilege is allowed under either one, so, no such assurance is necessary, sir, because they're actually parallel, they're the same thing. It's just an archaic vehicle moving into a 20th century zoning vehicle, and that's all this is, and we did first industrial ones, and now we're doing agricultural ones, and at some point down the road, we'll be doing the residential ones, but it's just a package of removing these vehicles of land use contracts, moving contracts into underlying zones, underlying zones, rather, so I hope I've made that clear to both you and the public tonight, that this is a housekeeping exercise that is required by provincial legislation. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may move along, I appreciate that clarification. A second area of concern that I believe I'm not alone amongst the residents of the area are the human health concerns, because of the proximity of these three properties to the Little Campbell River and the Brookswood Apefer.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm going to cut you off, because I have no idea what a public health concern would be relative to a land use contract moving into an egg zone, it's the same thing. You, again, sir, are moving into an arena of talking about an application that is not before this council, and I'm listening to my city solicitor, unless you have a comment regarding this particular piece of property, going from agriculture contract to agriculture zone, that's all I'm looking for. What are those comments relative to that?
And I apologize if it wasn't expressly clear when I tried to vocalize it. I guess my concern is that this is an environmentally sensitive area, and that any change to the status quo opens up a big void of unknown to people like myself who are concerned with the maintaining of the natural environment in that area, and the termination of these contracts could theoretically open it up down the road to any type of a fate which could include industrial rezoning, is my understanding.
And I hope I've made it clear, sir, that exactly that which is allowed under a land use contract is allowed under the zone, there is no difference.
Fair enough. May I terminate with just one question? Is there any impending rezoning that anyone is aware of, any council member is aware of on these properties, or any application?
No, there is not.
At this point?
There is no difference, there is no difference today than there was yesterday in terms of it's a simple housekeeping amendment to a land use contract to a zone. There is no more or less power relative to the land at all.
The process is exactly identical?
Yes.
I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you very much. I hope I've been clear that the parameters around which a public hearing allows us to have those comments, and I hope I have also been clear that this is simply a process by which the administration is moving forward with elimination, as we are required to do by the province of land use contracts. Anyone else wishing to speak to that? First call, second call, and final call. Thank you very much, for that ends the public hearing portion of today's meeting. Committee reports.
Move minutes be received with the senior advisory committee?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, that is carried.
Move minutes be received for TIC, October 5, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried, and we only have one proclamation today, which is unusual, and that is Red Ribbon Week, whereas the city of Surrey is actively involved in health awareness and infectious diseases, and whereas World AIDS Health Awareness Day is globally defined as December 1 each year, and whereas the Lookout Society in partnership with the Empire of the Peace Arch Monarchist Association have been active in raising awareness of HIV/AIDS, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepter, do hereby declare, November 29 to December 5, as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Surrey. Moving on to bylaws. Oh, to corporate reports. Corporate reports, engineering, the award of contract for the sanitary pump station.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 221.
Second.
Approval of the sale of closed portions of the road allowance, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 22, the award of the supply and delivery of bulk winter road salt.
Second.
With the hopes that we don't need it.
All those in favor, opposed, anybody opposed doesn't get their street cleaned with room... Carried.
Move R 223 subdivision development bylaw.
Second.
Update. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move R 224 road closure adjacent to 12576 100.
Second.
That says assisting Robson Park, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move R 225, sorry, 225 road closure adjacent to Robson Ravine Park.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the recommendation on R 226 childcare task force co-chair.
Second.
Councilor Villanueva? Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring to the public's attention and with our staff, I appreciate the support that they've given, is that several nonprofit organizations came before this council talking about the increased need for an initiative in the city to develop more childcare spaces, and I think it's very important, some of the facts that came out in the report tonight, it says 73% of families have both parents in the workforce now, and we need to start to adapt our services because we're way behind on childcare services, so I think this is a really important initiative that the city is going to co-chair. I think that Daljit Gil Bedesha, who's with Newton, has been working in the community, is a great new example of someone that's going to be in a good appointment for that chairship, and I think we all know that research is showing that investing in the early years is the greatest collective impact on improving social outcomes for our students, so I'm very happy to be participating, and I know over the years, over the last 20 years, people have been talking about the need for more childcare spaces, but I think this city is a growing city of families, and considering the housing costs and the costs of living for families now, expensive childcare is really the second largest item that they have in their budget, and we really need to address this growing issue in our cities, so I'm pleased to see that we're participating, and look forward to some reports coming to council about the progress on this task force.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Villanueva, I think it's a fundamentally important task force, and I believe that it's useful that we have both the profit and the nonprofit associations working together on the end result of the work of the force, so thank you for that, including that within the terms of reference. All those in favor, opposed, carried. The indicators in quality of life...
Been done?
Yes?
It's been done, right?
227, oh, we did that already, 227 and 228, right? Okay, so we're into bylaws, business arising, H1.
Move third on H1.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On third on the OCP, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On two, on the zoning, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And also on number two, that move that council support these units of the DVP 7915 016900, on final adoption.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On three, move third on the zoning.
All those in favor...
Second.
Galzor Villanueva, speaking to...
Just speaking to it just a moment, I was pleased to hear that the developer actually sort of addressed some of the parking issues that were brought forward, but his discussion about whether we should be looking to amend the bylaws considering the RF zoning with the secondary suites and the access of vehicles, I'm not sure if it's something that we are looking at, as staff, or is it in progress, or are we basically just dealing with it application by application?
Madam Mayor, to Councilor Villanueva, we've made already some changes throughout the year through housekeeping amendment for parking requirement in different residential zone, and each case is unique, and at the same time, we have to be careful that, we always try to strike a balance, sometimes we need to vary setbacks to save trees, or so we have to be careful how we do it, so the blanket requirements don't necessarily all work all the time, so...
Okay, well, it's a continuing worry with parking in the city, but I thought some of the points that were brought up were important, and I was glad to see the applicant actually take that extra step and address the issues, so, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I should also point out that we've made changes to the garage requirements in some of the zones as well, including townhomes as well.
Okay, thank you. Galzor Gil?
May I clarify, ma'am, I think that, I also wanted to recognize the developers' efforts of having these issues addressed in the building guidelines, I think it's really important that we work with the groups and the associations. That being said, over the last number of months, TIC has in fact been working with both planning and engineering, looking at viable parking solutions as it specifically relates to the secondary suites and the output, and again, President Mike Bullough from the Community Association has made numerous presentations at the TIC in terms of this particular issue, and we have been making some headway, but certainly dealing with that issue in context to our bylaws, I think that's something that will be addressed in the near future.
Thank you. Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on number four.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And on the development variance approval.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on five.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried, land use contracts.
Move third reading on six.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on six.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On number seven, move third reading.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On number seven, move final.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On number eight.
DVPs.
Number eight, move DVP 7915 0371 00 be approved.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On number nine, move DVP 7915 0297 00 be approved.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On number 10, that DVP 7915 0249 00 be approved.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 11, move that council support the issuance of a DVP 7915 0236 00, if supported, DVP would be brought forward for issuance and execution in conjunction with the final approval of associated DP 7915 0236 00.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on number 12.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final on 13.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final on 14.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Those were intermunicipal business license agreements. Introductions.
Move first on 15.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move first on number 16.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On number 17, move first.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On I-1, move the parking...
Those were all business license bylaws relative to both the downtown Surrey BIA, the Cloverdale BIA, and the Newton BIA for the purposes of the public. Clerk's report.
On I-1, move the parking patroler appointments.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And on number two, move the Night Shift 9th Annual Gala of Life on November 13.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Do I have any, yes, Councilor Woods, could you turn your...
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say that I did attend the Night Shift Gala on Friday.
November, yes.
Anyways, it was an excellent event, and incredible how the business community supports that endeavor, there was, I'm aware of, $75,000 raised, and there was a business group that matched that, up to $100,000, so I think that they were close to raising $200,000 for that gala, and it's pretty impressive how the community is behind that group, so thank you very much.
Thank you, we have some wonderful corporate givers. Do I have any notices of motion, councilors? Any other business? Seeing none, I'll call for an adjournment.
Some moves.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you very much to staff for appearing to... Thank you very much to staff for preparing today's agendas, items...